I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the form of liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight is Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. This is our regularly scheduled town council meeting. We have absent this evening is Councilman Alor, who is in the Midwest on business, and Ms. Lepelis, who is recovering from a medical procedure. And we all had to, Ms. Martin and myself, had to beg her not to stroll herself down here and compromise her recovery and to relax. And so I commend her for her wanting to be here. And up to about twelve seconds ago, she wanted to call in, but she's not feeling so well, so I told her we could probably handle it without her. So, here we go. We'll give it a shot. So, all the members of council are present, as is our first electman, Mr. Kellogg. Are there any comments relative to the consent calendar? All right, seeing that I'll pass the consent calendar as printed, we have communications A through R, and I'd ask that those be incorporated into our minutes. But we have public participation. Anybody like to participate at this time? All right, seeing that I'll close the first public participation. We have one appointment, which is Rachel Olivera to the First Electman's Business and Industry Advisory Committee. May I have a motion to appoint Ms. Olivera to such committee?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mauer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Allular for discussion. Since this is your appointment, Mr. Kellogg, I'll allow you to introduce the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as I might have reported earlier, we had a vacancy on that committee due to a seat that was vacated by a former member who's no longer employed at Victoria Knox Swiss Army. That, this was a seat that was representing large business. I'm very pleased that another, another town resident, Rachel Olivera, who is, also works at Victoria Knox Swiss Army, is very eager to get involved and participate and maintain that representation from large business.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, that motion carries seven zero. There are no other appointments. We'll move on to action items. First, committee report is the Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety. Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I spoke to Jason Mauer, who is liaison to finance, and also spoke to Mike Mangio. It mirrors what Jason had to say. So, anyway, Board of Finance will be meeting on Thursday the seventeenth for year-end transfers. They're currently dealing with the medical runout. However, they won't have numbers finalized until January. Jonathan Formicello sent his liaison report for Board of Education. The Board, Board of Education had a special education seminar that discussed the special education budgeting process and the rights and responsibilities of the district in regard to these students with special education requirements. In addition, the Board of Education through a policy committee is in the process of adopting the new state education mandates as they relate to more culturally diverse studies. The Board of Education through a policy committee is adopting a purchasing policy very similar to the town's purchasing policy. Regards to health, Chris Thornley had reported that they have not met in two months. The director has been very busy managing two jobs, but we hired a new sanitarium who started today. So, that's good news. That'll take a little bit of pressure off Nancy there. In police, we have hired two new officers, which brings us up to a full department. We do have one out injured, one on disability, and two in the military, but the department is full as far as hires. In fire, we're in the process of getting design and bid documents for Stepney and Stevenson Roof. And the Commission on Aging, Jason has a report regards to that.
Commission on Aging has continued to meet. They have continued to press on the issue of the expansion. That being said, they've also been very happy and very impressed with our new department head, who's been working directly with the selectmen, not only on that issue, but other issues as well. And they look forward to her next report on that, on that side, as well as other going on in town when it comes to the senior population and the aging population of Monroe.
Okay. Anything further, Mr. Rooney?
That is it. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you for a very full report. Appreciate that. Moving on to the second subcommittee. Action item B is the Town Council Committee on Planning and Zoning Public Works and Parks and Recreation. Ms. Lepelis is the chair of that. I don't think she anticipated missing the meeting, and I did not get a report from her. If anybody, it's a liaison may want to speak. Ms. Martin?
Yeah, we have nothing from planning and zoning, but I did go to the park and rec meeting, and they had just a couple of interesting things, probably for general consumption. There's an Eagle Scout named Corey Barker, who's gonna build a bridge on the border of Shelton, Monroe, the Pogusset, Pogusset, Pogusset Trail, right at the entrance to Webb Mountain. And he's making a bridge over some rocks there and everything. So, he came to Park and Rec to get that approved, which they did. They put up a railing in the pool for the elderly, but something that they had wanted to do. I thought it was kind of interesting. And they're still reviewing their rules, and I think they've given them to the town attorney to take a look at.
The, yeah, the town attorney is actively, it's kind of an ongoing process back and forth. I think what they've come to the conclusion is prior documents are very, I don't know what the right term, muddy, if you will. I mean, there's, there's, there's aspects of what's documented, which I think belong more properly in their bylaws of the commission. There are some that more properly should be rules of the park, rules, that kind of thing. So, they're looking to separate that, and that's what Attorney Hayden's been assisting them with and kind of going through and kind of organizing it in a, in a better fashion. While I know there's several different rules that the commission is looking to revisit, deliberate, and then which will ultimately come back to this council for approval as required.
Right. They have, they have been working on them for quite a while.
They have.
Different enforcement issues that they're, you know, struggling with, who has the authority on them and stuff. So, I'm glad to see that Jeremy's taking a look at them. Thank you.
Anything further?
Nope.
Moving on to action items. See, the Town Council Committee on Legislative and Legislative Matters. I know it was a busy meeting for Mr. Reed, so Mr. Reed?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was. We, everything we discussed is on the agenda items tonight, and we will share once each one comes up.
Okay. Thank you. D, Strategic Planning. Mr. Formicello?
We are waiting more information for the items that were on our agenda at our last meeting, and we're working to come, come to a date that works for all our members.
Okay. E M S, Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did meet tonight. We had a combined meeting with EMS Building Committee and LNA to forward our agreement for a construction manager risk will be coming up. Report so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask? Can I ask Mr. Formicello, Strategic Planning?
No, not yet. We, we still need information so that we can have our meeting and have a fruitful discussion about those items.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kellogg. Item F, your.
Thank you. So, a few things coming down. One is just I wanted to share the, one of the advertising items from our Economic Development Commission for Restaurant Week, which will start on the twentieth. Just one of, a bunch of different efforts that they're doing to advertise the event. The other items I wanted to just update everyone on, many of you are probably aware of some of these things, 'cause I have been, some of these things I have sent out in other media as well. One is the good news with the traffic signal at the intersection of Route twenty-five and Bradford Drive. The state, while they could not find criteria that would meet the federal requirements that would support the upgrades that were in place, they have agreed to leave it in its current configuration and continue to operate it until further notice. They made reference in that decision to input they received from me, as well as other town officials and the public at large. As you recall, we had a fairly large meeting in this room with quite a crowd of people, and they gave very thoughtful input, and I am pleased that the DOT came to a compromise in taking their, their input from residents and business owners into consideration when they made that decision. So, that's good. I wanted to update, just give you a quick update. On Hammer Town Road, there's been some residents that have asked some questions about the paving project there, 'cause there was some work done, and then it's kind of in a holding pattern at the moment. So, the work started several weeks ago with a lot of underground drainage repairs that were completed. The reconstruction efforts began earlier this month with a process called cold-in-place recycling, which takes the existing surface, old surface, processes it, and puts it back down on the roadway to create a new structurally sound base. So, going on Hammer Town, you might, some, some have thought, well, is that the new road? Is that it? That is not it. What is happening now is there's additional work to raise catch basins and do some other minor prep work. And then, once that is finished, a final paving code will be done, which is tentatively scheduled for next week. I know in, not the last meeting, I think it was two meetings ago, our Economic Development Commission gave a rather comprehensive update on what they've been working on. I thought it would be appropriate to give you some incremental updates as appropriate so that you're getting more timely input from what they're up to and the things that they've been working on. Couple of updates of interest, the former Stepney Hardware location, staff is working with the property owners and business owners. Obuchan Hardware has announced that they've leased the former site, as well as they're going to expand into an adjacent unit. So, as, as sad as we were to see Stepney Hardware retire, we're excited that we have a prospective business to go in their, in their place. Second, you recall there's a crew development on two oh five and O Turnpike. That's where there's a approval for a Noble gas station, as well as some other, some other buildings as well. One of those is a restaurant. The developers have confirmed that they have a prospective tenant in Panera Bread. They are submitting, they have submitted an application to modify their approval to allow for a drive-through and outdoor seating, which is not on the current approved plan, so they will be going before planning and zoning for that modification. So, another, another project they're looking forward to. I thought I would share with you some schedule of upcoming ribbon cuttings that are out there, coming up in the very near future. We have several, Natural Pet Outlet and Lakeside Nutrition, both in Clock Tower on October twenty-sixth. Orthofast, that opened an office on Main Street on October twenty-ninth. M and T Bank, that's open on Main Street at eleven-sixth. And although not a business, I do not want to exclude the libraries, New Maker Space. They will be doing a ribbon cutting as well on November second, so hope to see you there. And last but certainly not least, at the last meeting, a question was raised as to what specific changes have been made in the past at the intersection at Wheeler and Shelton Road. I just, I won't read them off there, but I just wanted to recap. Would have been previously reported in a couple of, two prior meetings, so that you have a complete list of the upgrades that were done at the intersection. And that is all.
Mr. Trum?
Yes, Mr. Mauer.
Mr. Selectman, as well as to the council, I was asked for this meeting to bring forward just a thanks to the selectmen, the town, the support of this council from Think Pink. The kickoff vet event was a great success, as well as the month has been going absolutely fantastic. So, they did want me to come and thank the members of this council, the town, the selectmen for all of their support so far through the month. And it was a, it's been a great first year, and they're looking forward to working with the town for many years to come.
Mr. Mauer?
Thank you.
Mr. Kellogg, can I, thank you so much for the EDC updates.
You're very welcome.
I think these are great. I actually have a question about Restaurant Week.
Sure.
Is it possible for us to, after it's over, get a breakdown of how much was spent? Because I know you had, I had asked you at the last meeting what we were doing for it, and the flyers are, these flyers are great, but I don't see any signs around town. I see one on Pepper Street. I saw one on Pepper Street. I see signs for the comedy night everywhere for the women's club, but I haven't seen any signs.
I know that EDC did print several signs, and they were, they discussed at their last meeting about where they're gonna be putting them up, so I'm assuming it's just a matter of time.
Okay.
So, but I'd be happy to, after, after the conclusion of Restaurant Week, to get you a final.
Great, thank you.
Summary of their budget for that.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. So, we have no unfinished business this evening, so we'll move on to new business. We'll kind of do the agenda this evening. So, what I'm gonna do with indulgence is just to work around a little bit to try to accommodate some of our guests that we have this evening, so that we can get them moved to the front. So, first, what I want to do is move ahead to item F, which is the resolution regarding the Burlington Construction Manager Agreement for the EMS facility. And they have a motion to approve the following resolution, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, the First Electman of Town Row, is authorized to execute deliver on behalf of the Town Row the standard form of agreement between owner and construction manager as a constructor, AIA one three-three dash two thousand nine, and the associated documents binding between Burlington Construction Company Incorporated for construction manager services for EMS facility projects. Motion by Mr. Reed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Formicello. As is customary, I will turn the floor over for introduction of this item to our selectmen. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as this council is well aware, the town is in the process of completing, which is the first phase of the EMS building project. You'll recall, the first phase simply allows the town to complete the construction bid package portion of the project. The final, once, once that is done, the final project still requires all the necessary approvals, including a town meeting. So, in the process of the bid phase, pre-construction phase, the town issued an RFP for this construction manager, so that we can get these bid documents done. The EMS Building Committee has recommended the awarding of a contract to Burlington Construction. I will note, as I mentioned in my cover letter, the, the agreement does contemplate the entire project. However, only the fees for the pre-construction phase are authorized and funded at this time, so I want to bring that to your attention. We could certainly, certainly have the entertaining other questions, but I also want to recognize the chairman of the Building Committee, Councilmember Rooney, who was very instrumental in leading his committee and moving this project along. And I also want to recognize that we do have representatives from Burlington here, should you have any questions for them as well.
Mr. Kellogg, Mr. Rooney, do you want to say anything about this? I know you've worked really hard on this, and Mr. Kellogg recognized you, but if you want to say anything, just by way of introduction, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Selectman, for opening this up for the chairman. Yeah, I, I think the committee did a great job of vetting the contractor that we have chosen. I think we, we let this through, through this thoroughly. As you know, the council picked this committee, chose the individuals on here. We had a lot of expertise in there. So, specifically, I want to give some credit to Mike Vitello, John Brennan, who are in the audience tonight, for their input through this. As you know, these things are complicated. These contracts are complicated, and they take time. There's a lot of questions to be asked and answered, and I'm very happy with the outcome. It was, it's, it's a very good committee to work with, and overall, just very, very happy with the results, and I hope that this council moves this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Mr. Reed?
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. In my role as, as chairman of the LNA committee, we had vetted it over two meetings, one time before last council and another time tonight for some follow-up activities. There were a couple of things. We wanted to absolutely make sure the purchasing policy was followed, anything from getting references, making sure we had, you know, multiple bids, consideration of local or regional businesses, locals on Monroe, really just a vast number of things. We go through a checklist, and we believe in LNA that the subcommittee, or the committee for EMS, had followed up and answered all of those to the, to the level where we provided a consensus to move to council.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Chairman, if I may, just.
Yes.
One addendum. I just, I was negligent and just wanted to also acknowledge that there was significant work from our town attorney, who worked closely with the committee, as, as was referenced earlier. These were somewhat complicated documents, and now that was, do we have to work through a lot of those matters? There was also, this also was coordinated with Kerma as well, as they, they had certain requirements that they wanted incorporated as well relative to their, you know, ensuring the town. So, I want to thank Attorney Hayden for his work.
I just wanted to comment quickly. I wanted to commend this council, you know, reiterate my thanks to Mr. Rooney and Mr. Reed. I think as long as I've been on council, from experience, we've had the fortunate opportunity to see the trials and tribulations of large-scale projects like this, sometimes bypassing the process due to time constraints, sometimes not having the ability to conduct a thorough of a job as we may have wanted to based upon a number of circumstances, but at the end, you know, we always felt we had enough information to make the decision. This was a little bit different. I know it did take some time, and probably a lot, a lot of people out there are thinking that's just typical legislative red tape, but I want to thank everybody for their thorough approach in this. There was some excellent, excellent work done by the subcommittee. Since we've been utilizing subcommittees for projects like this, I think they've done an excellent job of putting together a, a very strong group of people, like the subcommittee with subject matter experts on there, that were able to really work through a lot of the nuances, and they did an excellent job of that. And then, just when they, that subcommittee thinks the process is complete, it's really just the beginning, and it goes to LNA, the selectmen, the town attorney, are, are working on contract negotiations for probably a month or so, going back and forth with the very difficult document. If you're not familiar with the AIA doc, AIA documents, they're printed, you know, boilerplate, seventy pages of legal lease. That's why we have Attorney Hayden working through that. And then, after all that's said and done, you get to come to LNA and be ripped apart by LNA up and down to make sure that we've crossed our Ts and dotted our Is, so that we're prepared to come before the, the full council, not have to sit here publicly and have these discussions, question and answers, waste time for third-party contractors to come down multiple times to answer questions, and have members of the public who've been working on this come and answer questions. So, I just think this is a good example of a, just a well-oiled machine that we've become vetting these projects. I had a number of concerns with this particular project, and I think concerns is probably using that term inappropriately. I wanted to make sure that their checks and measures, checks and balances were in place, and they were. And, you know, again, I want to thank Mr. Rooney for answering all of those questions. I was not able to attend the LNA meeting tonight, but I did have an opportunity to make sure that all of my questions were addressed in advance. And again, I'm just highlighting the process for the general public and for council, so that council's aware of. I know council is aware of it, but with this particular project, so much work went into it before it gets up here. So, we, we have a ten-minute, fifteen-minute discussion about this, but we're really talking about probably a hundred and fifty hours of work that's gone into this behind the scenes. And that's, in my opinion, the way it's supposed to be done. So, thank you all for that. Again, we had great bipartisan support on this project all the way through, and without that, this, this government couldn't function. So, I just want to thank everybody for their cooperation in that. So, here we are, discussion about what's before us. Ms. Martin?
Not necessarily. I would ask the First Electman if you would introduce the representatives from Burlington so it's into the record?
Justin?
Yes.
Justin from Burlington Construction?
Hi, Justin Jamal. I'm the president of Burlington Construction. I, I thank you for inviting us here, and thank you for considering our, our proposal, and if there's anybody any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great, thank you.
He's been here since six thirty, really, boys. He's been here since six thirty.
Well, LNA was at six thirty, right?
Yeah, but he didn't come into LNA.
Oh, okay. So, you're asking a question?
I don't know.
Anybody?
Did you get a sandwich?
I did, yes. I got a sandwich.
It is a, as, as you mentioned, this, this contract is very in-depth, goes through a lot of different items. So, for the sole fact that I really only have one major question on such a large document is, is a testament to that. And it deals with the guaranteed maximum price, in that I, I noticed that the first step of the contract is the fifteen thousand dollars, which then you go through the first, really, two steps, which includes coming up with the guaranteed maximum price. And I see that the construction starts upon acceptance of the guaranteed maximum price, but I did not see anything about what happens if there is no acceptance of the guaranteed maximum price. That comes in, and it's either above the, far above the limits we expected, or for some reason, there's no acceptance made, what happens at, at that point.
Who's that question directed to, Mr.?
My, my guess is actually Mr. Hayden would be the best to answer the question, but...
I agree with you. I just saw you, I saw you looking at the gentleman from Burlington.
I just wanted to strike some fear into...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mauer, ladies and gentlemen, the commission of council. That would, that would be a failed contingency, because we would be stuck without, without any, any, any contract to proceed to until we were able to have a meeting of, meeting of the minds.
And so, from your opinion, we wouldn't have any obligation to move forward until such time as that meeting of the minds, or any other amounts due until that meeting of the minds, or any worry about a default and damages to the town if that were to be the case?
Yes, there's, and there's an additional provision that we have in the contract that we, we were able to, to add in, where if there's a, if there's a financing or funding issue, the town has, has an out there, if, in the event that that were to occur. So, yes, we are protected in that regard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer.
Anybody else? Why, Mr. Hayden's standing before us? He's not gonna go very far, but nothing? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, everybody who was involved for your hard work on...
Yes, Mr. Formicello.
Just for, from a big picture standpoint, not just this initial contract, but I had an opportunity to visit the EMS facility a few weeks ago and see the condition that our volunteers have to donate their time, as well as paid staff have to endure with the use of that facility. Monroe has a great spirit of volunteerism, and rewarding that volunteerism and supporting that behavior in town is critically important to the success of our town in the future. And so, it's very important that this project get started.
Anybody else? The, the other thing I wanted to mention, I forgot to mention, and I just want to say to council, I, I thought there was a very interesting conversation at LNA as to using some, I guess, defining as a council, some of the aspects of the purchasing policy. And I found that extremely interesting, and I think, you know, I want to get a hand in, thank Mr. Rooney and Mr. Reed, subcommittees, for kind of permitting me, I guess, to ask those, those kind of hard-getting questions. And, and I think that together we've identified a little bit more of a formula moving forward that we can utilize, so that we are all assured that individually and together, we think that the appropriate considerations were given to the, the bidders. And not with, I don't want to get into too much detail, but I, I just think it's another really interesting aspect of this is, is interpreting the new purchasing policy, which we've not really had an opportunity to do. So, that's what we're here to do, is to kind of legislate those things and, you know, collectively kind of define that for, for LNA and for the individual subcommittee. So, thank you for that. Anybody else?
Were you making changes to the purchasing policy?
No, I, I don't, I don't think they necessitate changes at this particular time. I, I think it was eye-opening, and there was this, you know, there was a situation that we presented with this particular project that may be unique. It may not be unique in the, in the future based upon, you know, the, the different bidders, but I think it just created some, opened some eyes as to maybe certain weights that were given to certain aspects of the purchase, purchasing policy over others. And again, I, I think it's an individualistic thing, and I think it's a collective thing, but ultimately, ultimately, it's for this body to decide. but ultimately, ultimately it's for this body to decide at some point, should it be, you know, should it be more apparent or we have a better opinion about it, but I just think that was interesting and I wanted to make sure the record was clear that that was considered and is likely to be evolving. Anybody else?
Other than that, couldn't have been a more coincidental ringtone to go to vote.
All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Against, motion carries, seven to zero, and I'm thrilled to see this project kind of throw some more likes. So thank you very much, thank you, sir, for your attendance, we appreciate that. It's nice to have you in case any questions arise. You're no longer compelled to be here if you don't want to be.
I'm no longer compelled to be. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the, let's find it on here.
Mr. Chairman, could I recommend an item that would be...
Sure, I was going to move on to item D, but...
That's where I was going.
Don't steal my thunder, okay?
No, I just...
Item D is the resolution regarding the agreement with the Grasso Companies for the Pepper Street reconstruction state project number 84-109. May I have a motion to approve the following resolution? Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first elect of the town of Monroe, has authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe, the construction agreement and any associated documents binding between the Grasso Companies LLC for state project 84-109, specifications for reconstruction of Pepper Street. This authorization shall be contingent upon receiving authorization from the state of Connecticut to award this contract.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mauer is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Reed. Again, as is customary, I'll turn the floor over to the first elect.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you, as this council is well aware from our prior meetings about this project, we are working diligently with the Department of Transportation in attempting to award the contract to move the Pepper Street reconstruction project forward. Again, a project that was authorized and approved back in 2014 and required some significant effort to get back, back on track and moving forward. So at that time, at that last meeting, we discussed this, the council authorized the requisite documents to be executed to allow us to go out to bid, which was conducted. You'll recall that this project is 90% funded through state or federal funds. However, the town is required to be the contractor for the entire, the entire project. We will essentially be reimbursed at the 90% level. So again, the town did go out to bid, the lowest qualified bid was submitted by the Grasso Companies and I've included in your packet, the printed packet, the agreement, which is actually only a couple of pages, but it incorporates the bid submission, which follows in your hard copy package, the entire agreement references, many other documents that I believe Mr. Schatzline will show you later, which resembles a phone book for those of us that remember what a phone book looks like. The reason for the contingent approval on the state, so we are awaiting state DOT authorization to allow us to award this contract, which Mr. Schatzline can explain in further detail as well. However, once we receive that, time will be of the essence. There are certain clocks that start ticking, we will have time measured in days to send the agreement out and for Grasso to return it. So I felt it's prudent to get your approval for that at this time. So with that, I would like to, I can turn the floor over to Mr. Schatzline for any other questions you may have, and we also have representatives from Grasso Companies here as well to answer any questions you may have. I will, just as a footnote, mention that to remain to the prior discussion we were having, Grasso Companies is in the process of opening up a facility here in Monroe. So they are a, or will very soon be a local business.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Mr. Schatzline, do you want to fill us in on anything that you deem relevant or appropriate?
You didn't bring the phone book.
I can show you that if you want to see that. Scott Schatzline, I'm a town engineer and licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. Yes, we did get seven bids. So they ranged from $4,709 roughly to $7,097. And so that was, the bids were checked by BL, who's our consulting engineer, and they ran through the bids and confirmed that all the numbers were correct. In that agreement, you'll see the actual proposal that lists all of the unit items. This is a unit item project. So all of the work that's going to be done has already been estimated, so we have unit amounts and now a dollar figure for that. So BL went through that and confirmed everything and they also submitted a recommendation to the town August 6th, 2019, where they recommended award to Grasso Companies LLC, indicating that they were very familiar with their work, listing several towns where they did some other projects. As part of their bid package, they also submitted records for the last five years and also a table of completed projects. So the current status of the project is with the state of Connecticut, they are waiting to finalize or waiting for the town to finalize the negotiations with the consulting engineer for inspection services for the project. That negotiation has been completed, I sent it into the state ready to send us the authorization to award the project. Once we get the authorization, we'll be in a position to immediately award the project. The contractor, Grasso, then has 15 days to review or to execute their portion of the contract and send it back with the various bonding and insurance and other documents that the project manual requires. Then once we get it, the town will have 10 days to review it and execute it and send it back to them. So that's why it's before you now. It's a standard, the agreement is part of the bid documents, so the language in that is not expected to change. The language has been reviewed by the town attorney and you have a recommendation as well as a recommendation from the first selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Schatzline, questions for Mr. Schatzline?
Just briefly, Scott, the 15 day turnaround and then the 10 by the town, that doesn't have to come back to the council or to LNA, does it?
Well, that's the reason why I've asked that the, if you authorize the execution of this agreement as it currently stands, unless Grasso came forward wanting a change, assuming they accepted it as presented, the conditional approval would authorize me to execute it once I got the authorization from the state.
Okay, as long as there's no changes.
As long as there's no changes.
Okay, good.
Anybody else? Mr. Reed.
Thank you. Mr. Schatzline, refresh me a bit, how, what is the length of this project?
This is going to run, the project is going to start June of 2020 and it's going to end in December.
Meaning it starts where and it ends where?
It starts...
Meaning...
Physically?
Yes, physically.
Physically, yeah.
Oh, physically, out in the field? I don't have that information yet because that really is something that's negotiated or worked out with the contractor.
Okay.
Now, what's going to happen is although the contractor is not going to start until the spring, the utility companies hopefully will be going in there and doing some work in preparation for that. So some of that may be driven by the utility companies and also the permits for doing the work for the culvert that crosses the road. We'll be replacing the box culvert for the aquatic river and also extending it so that the trail will have a way to get over it. That can only be done during certain months as well. So I thought you had gotten a copy of, there is a project schedule in here which talks about the various parts of the project. I don't know if it fully defines, you know, where those parts are, that kind of thing. There is a separate part of that, there's three segments. There's the segment of Main Street and Pepper Street intersection. There's going to be widening there with signal improvements. It's kind of its own little job. Then there's going to be the section which runs from Cambridge all the way down to Grant and that is going to involve the section of the box culvert replacement in the middle and then toward the north end will be a change in profile of the roadway, so there's going to be a considerable cut there. Kind of work, kind of like what was done on Main Street where they changed the elevation of the roads so that it sightlines better. And then the third element's going to be the multi-use trail, which will go from the north end of Northbrook down to Grant Road.
Are there, I'm just looking at the breakdown of prices and one of them is concrete for steps and that's why I ask, I don't remember steps in any of this.
I'm not remembering steps either. It must be a minimal item.
$21,000.
All right. I'm wondering if you're reading something about the...
Steps and copings, is that...
That's part of the bridge process.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not like steps to a building kind of thing. Yeah, the, that goes with the box culvert.
Okay. And I also wanted to, we talked about this in LNA, how well presented this was. It basically checked all the boxes of what we were asking for. So thank you and thank you again. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, just to confirm, based off of both introductions, $4,709 was actually the lowest bid total, not just the lowest qualified bid, so it was actually the lowest bid that came in, that's correct?
Correct.
Which is great. I was a little excited when I saw $2, but that pesky asterisk got there. I was going to ask how you managed that one. Also, I just wanted to double check, I believe it was, but the conversation was a while ago, this pricing is well within the amount that we expected, I believe so, going back to that conversation, that this is within that range that we expected this bid to come in at.
Yeah, this, the construction, this bid was actually higher, a little higher than the project estimate for construction, but it's within the 20% range that the state of Connecticut has. So I've been assured by the coordinator that it's within the budget, the money's there and it is authorized.
And it's well within that 20% range, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, it's way on the lower end of that. And also offsetting that hopefully is the negotiation for the project inspection came in a little lower than was in the estimate. The completed right-of-way cost came in lower than the estimate.
So those could offset.
Yeah, and there's also extra work that was authorized that has come in lower than the estimate as well.
Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schatzline, anybody else? All right, I'll see you know for the discussion, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. And against, motion carries, seven to zero. Gentlemen, thank you for coming, I appreciate it. You don't have to stay any longer for our exciting meeting.
Can we see the phone book?
Yeah.
Next, I would like to move on to, I have it all teed up, here is B. Item B, resolution regarding the amended deep grant agreement for the Houstonic Valley River Trail. So is there a motion to approve the following resolution? Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first elect of the town of Monroe, has authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe, the Houstonic River Valley Trail Agreement as amended and any associated documents binding between the state of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection for the design and construction of the Houstonic River Valley Trail, Sections 2 and 3, and be further resolved that the policies of the town of Monroe comply with nondiscrimination agreements and warranties of Connecticut general statutes, Sections 4A-60 and 4A-60A as amended. So moved. Motion by Mr. Formchell is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mauer. Again, by way of introduction, the floor is turned over to Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if any of you are wondering that this agreement looks very familiar, it should. This agreement was one that came before you in June. You authorized the execution of the agreement, which I did do when we sent it up to the state. We were waiting for a while and then the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection advised the town that the attorney general's office wanted to make changes to the agreement. And so they were not executing it, they would send us a revised agreement. So you have a revised agreement here in your package in discussions with the town attorney and Mr. Schatzline. Basically, the only real substantive change is that they clarified that for the purposes of the match, the town's match portion of the 20%, that the, they will not apply, the only thing they will allow is the prospect this grant is awarded. So we talked last time about things such as Mr. Schatzline's time that has gone into this. We will still be able to use any time going forward, but we will not be able to count previous hours that he's worked on this. So it does not impact our funding levels, the project was fully funded without that consideration at the time in the capital plan. Obviously, we want to avail ourselves to anything we can charge in relative in kinds that will obviously benefit the town and taxpayers for having funds available for other projects, but that is really the only substantive change that was made.
Great, thank you, Mr. Kellogg, Andy, for the discussion. Mr. Mauer.
Just one request in the future, when we do have these kinds of documents come back, if possible, it would be helpful to get a red line to the original. It did take a while to be able to go through and see exactly what the changes were, although I did get there. If we can have that in the future, it would be extremely helpful.
Yeah, unfortunately, the state did not provide a red line, but I understand.
Anybody else? All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. And against, motion carries, seven to zero. We'll move back to the top to A, which is the resolution regarding the Amark Refreshment Services LLC customer relationship agreement for the library. And may I have a motion to approve the following resolution? Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first elect of the town of Monroe, has authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe, the customer relationship agreement and the associated documents binding between Amark Refreshment Services LLC for refreshment services, equity dealer memorial library. So moved. Motion by Mr. Reed, second by Mr. Rooney, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as I outlined in my cover memo, the library director, Lorna Ryans, is looking to kind of enhance the coffee service that we provide in the library and specifically in the new makerspace area where that's envisioned. So they kind of have this upgraded service concept. The intent is that it would break even through the, you know, charges to patrons for the coffee, to the extent that the, those fees do not fully make this a break even endeavor, they have a commitment to cover it through donations from the friends of the library.
Any questions, comments, discussion?
They asked if the coffee was going to be good and he said it would.
Excellent. It's important, it's a great question. Anybody else? All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. And against, motion carries, seven to zero. Moving on to C. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the resolution regarding the memorandum of agreement between the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection for Disaster Recovery Centers. May I have a motion to approve the following resolution? Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first elect of the town of Monroe, has authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe, the memorandum of agreement and the associated documents binding between the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security regarding disaster recovery centers. Motion by Mr. Melius is our second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Martin, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, the process of working with the state of Connecticut, our emergency management director and deputy emergency management director were going through various documentation and one of the things they'd be looking for... one of the things we'd be looking for was an update to confirm locations that had been previously identified for use as a disaster recovery center in Town Monroe. Unfortunately, the location that they had, that was in there, I do not feel was adequate. It was basically Room 204 here in Town Hall, which would not afford sufficient space for this type of operation. This is a situation where the state and/or the federal government, primarily through FEMA, would establish a, basically, an office to conduct business, office work for residents and business owners that were coming in to be provided with information and application processing, et cetera, for disaster recovery services, basically with state and federal aid is being provided after a disaster. So the analogy I gave at LNA is, if you remember, after Hurricane Sandy, there was a center set up in Fairfield where all that kind of processing occurred. It would be that level of an emergency. So there would be a significant event that would require that kind of a center. So in the process of looking to find larger spaces that could accommodate that, knowing that in that type of scenario, normal operations would likely be curtailed or modified that would provide other larger areas, we simply asked them to provide a refreshed agreement at the same time, because the current agreement was significantly outdated and not worthy of simply amending. So we have a fresh agreement with two more appropriate sites identified.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any questions, comments, discussion? Makes too much sense, correct? All right, so seeing nothing further, I will call for a vote, all those in favor. And against, motion carries, seven to zero. We'll move on to item E, which is the resolution regarding the memorandum of agreement with Ledge Light Health, which is basically eligible for a grant. So may I have a motion to approve the following resolution? Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first elector of Town Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver. On behalf of the Town of Monroe, the memorandum of agreement and the associated documents binding between Ledge Light Health District pertaining to the region for public health preparedness program. Motion by Mr. Foreman, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Martin. Again, Mr. Kellogg for introduction.
Thank you. So in your package, packets, excuse me, I have the, you have the MOA, which is really only the first six pages. That would be our agreement with Ledge Light. Behind it is a much larger document between them and the state, which I'll explain in a moment. This contract is something that is actually probably somewhat familiar to this council, although you haven't seen it with Ledge Light in the past. This is a contract to allow grant funding for various emergency preparedness activities in public health. Those contracts historically have been directly with local health, the municipalities, or the health districts, and the state directly. Several years back, the state decided they wanted to instead contract with one agency per region, and then have them subcontract with various local health agencies. In the past couple of years, the fiduciary and coordinator for our area has been Yale. So the last couple of times this is coming for you, the agreement was between the Town of Monroe and Yale. This year, the state is looking to engage, or they have already engaged Ledge Light Health District as the fiduciary and coordinator for our region. So as such, the agreement back that I've included is the agreement that Ledge Light Health District has with the state of Connecticut to perform that service. The Town of Monroe would be a subcontractor under Ledge Light to perform all pieces that are specific to Monroe. The, a lot of the terms are defined in the agreement with the state and Ledge Light, which is why I wanted to include it for you. Otherwise, this program, the deliverables, the definitions are all largely, they're all very much same to what they've been many, many years. There's no significant changes in what is being done. It's simply a change in a, again, in the fiduciary for the state.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any further discussion?
Mr. Kellogg, did Ledge Light take over the whole thing for the state?
I do not believe so. I don't know that for certainly, but my understanding is that they have one or, they have our region and maybe one other region that they are currently, because they are not actually in our region, they're a different region, Region 4. So I believe they're also the coordinator of Region 4, as well as what they're doing here, but I don't know if they have any other regions.
Okay.
I need further discussion. Seeing none, I will call for a vote, all those in favor. And against, that motion carries, seven to zero. We have item G, which is a resolution regarding the disbandment of the library building. So may I have a motion to approve the following resolution? Whereas the library building committee, a special committee of the town council, was formed on December 22nd, 2003, for the purpose of super region management and control of the construction of a new, whereas the construction was completed and the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library was opened on March 4th, 2007, and whereas the library building committee has completed its mission, and the town council extends its gratitude to those who have served on the committee, now therefore be resolved that the library building committee is hereby disbanded. Same motion by Mr. Maurer, second, by Mr. Rooney. The memo speaks for itself. I want to thank Mr. Kellogg's office for continuing his efforts in trying to research and consolidate and, if necessary, disband committees that are unnecessarily still in existence. This is one of those committees. And as this council's been well aware, there's been many efforts by Mr. Kellogg's office to keep us apprised of these types of scenarios that have been existing. So it's kind of a housecleaning measure and something that we should have done a while back. And with that, I'll open the floor for discussion, if there is any. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. And against, motion carries, seven to zero. Next, we have the resolution regarding a donation to the Parks and Recreation Department for a memorial bench from Ms. Elaine Petrola. So may I have a motion to accept the very generous donation of $1,690 from Ms. Elaine Petrola to the Town of Monroe specifically for the purchase and installation of a memorial bench. Motion by Ms. Martin, second, by Mr. Foreman. This is self-explanatory. As we've said in the past, these donations are put on our agenda to commend our residents and/or individuals who are so kind and generous to make such wonderful donations to improve our community. And it's incumbent upon us, in my opinion, to give them at least the public recognition that this council affords in this particular situation. So if there's any further discussion? Yes, Ms. Martin?
Yeah, Park and Rec, it was discussed, this was in, to be in memory of Bernice Petrola, who was a longtime resident, active in the community. And Park and Rec said that they will install it in the spring, you know, pending approval from the council.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that. Any further discussion? So again, on behalf of the full council, just a very heartfelt thank you for that generous donation. With that, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor. And against, the motion carries, seven to zero. Our next to last item is to be some more generosity, in-kind donations from the friends of Edith Wheeler Memorial Library Incorporated to the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library. So is there a motion to approve and accept the in-kind donations totaling $22,021.22 towards the library's current renovation efforts from the friends of Edith Wheeler Memorial Library Incorporated? Motion by Mr. Maurer, second. Second by Mr. Foreman. Again, did up to what I said, this particular donation is noted to have come originally from, the original source of funds was a generous donation from Monroe Lions Club to the friends of Edith Wheeler Memorial Library, and passing through to the Town of Monroe specifically for in-kind donations to improve the library's renovation efforts, including the makerspace, the coffee break area, and the teen space. There was a breakdown given, $6,600 for electrical work and $15,000 and change for the wall panels, totaling $22,021.22. So thank you very much for, again, for that donation. As we've said in the past, we can't, we could not do, certain projects in town are co-accomplishing projects in town without these generous donations. With that, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. And against, that motion carries, seven to zero. The last item is regarding our schedule. It comes to my attention that our schedule is somewhat tight as it relates to December and November's meeting, specifically, our last meeting in November is November 25. That is the week of Thanksgiving, meaning that, and following meeting in December, our own meeting in December is December 9th. That gives us five business days to consider business between the two meetings.
To get packets out.
To get packets out, and more importantly, if something comes, you know, comes up. So it was thought that we move that December 9th meeting to the following week, which still avoids the holiday season to a large extent. So I'm asking for essentially, first, a consensus from the council, if we have the numbers, and if it's not objectionable, anybody I'd like to move our meeting from the 9th and the 16th of December. So anybody have any objection to that?
I can change the meeting, you can do the number please, but I think this is the most appropriate way to do it. Yeah, I think it makes sense. I mean, if we're going to conduct any meaningful business, I think we should have an opportunity to have it vetted in advance. This would be impossible to do otherwise, so. I don't want to have a flashback to the old days, so I'd like to have some time to consider everything. Good? All right, so I'm going to do, by the way, a motion, just because I like to have a consensus, so may I have a motion to move the December 9th meeting to December 6th. Same motion by Mr. Rooney, second by Mr. Rooney. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries, seven to zero. We have second, public participation. No takers. I want to wish everybody luck, my fellow parents, luck in the upcoming election, that we're all lucky enough to continue to serve together, and that the residents put their confidence in each and every one of you. I really want to commend each and every one of you, you've done a fabulous job. It's been a pleasure serving with all of you, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. With that, motion to adjourn. Ms. Martin, thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Aguilera. All those in favor, motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you very much.